Go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting tonight. If you would all join us, stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our new council members here tonight. So if you have any questions, I'll try to explain things as you go along, just so it helps you follow along. Erin, do you want to go ahead and do the roll?
Councilmember Decker.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwin.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Do we have any changes to the agenda or updates that we had? Okay, with that, I take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Are you a second?
A second.
Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Next, it's time for our public input period. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. And just for our audience here, so you understand tonight, and we have a public hearing. So comments for that can happen during the public hearing portion. Okay? Does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to stand and say or present to the council? Okay, hearing that, I'll go ahead and I'll close the public input period, and we'll move on to our consent agenda for today. First item is item three point one, I need approval for the minutes of the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting. We need a motion to adopt resolution one, that's approving the bills. Next, we have item three point three, which is acknowledging receipt of city reports from PNZ, the library board, the forestry committee, park and rec, and the wastewater department. Next, we have a motion to adopt resolution two, and that's amending the salary resolution. I believe we have some library people who have some changes there due to years of service. Next, item three point five is a motion to approve the payment of the following downtown incentive grants to Milestone Group for the property at two oh one East Main Street. We have a facade grant in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars on the south side and then the north side for three thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and twelve cents, and then the west facade in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Next, we need a motion to adopt resolution three, and that's approving the depository resolution for Farmers Emergent Savings Bank, and those are the signature people. A motion to adopt resolution four, and again, signatures, and that is for Citizen State Bank. We need a motion for resolution five, and that's approving the depositories at Community Savings Bank. And then motion to adopt resolution six, and that is the depository resolution for General G and B Bank. Before you, there is all of the consent items. I would take a motion in a second, and we can open it up for discussion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? Hearing that, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. It is now five oh four. I'm going to open the public hearing on a proposed resolution and necessity for the twenty twenty-four East Main Street improvement project. And I know we received two letters, well, now three tonight. Is there any other correspondence from anybody else? Do you have phone calls or anything?
I haven't received any further written or phone calls.
I just have one phone call. They weren't going to be available tonight, but they were in support of the project.
Okay. Now, it's a public comment, so if anybody would like to speak during the public hearing, we just ask that you state your name and address and stand so we can hear you and see you.
If you have my letter, do I need to?
Yeah, you can just stand and say, address it, yeah, if you want to, yeah.
Okay. My name is Kathy Groo, I'm at eight thirty-nine East Main Street. My letter is concerning the Main Street and the Low Drive intersection stream improvements. Dear City Council, we feel that the work planned for East Main Street will be an improvement. We are compliant in the fact that we will have to move some shrubs and reduce some landscaping on our property. We agree that East Main Street is in need of these improvements. We do not understand why our sidewalk has to be moved two feet closer to the street. This will cause a domino effect to our landscaping across the entire frontage of our property. We feel that the assessment is extremely high, and we claim exemption to this assessment based on the information in our abstract. Entry number thirty-seven states a special warranty deed which conveys the west thirty feet of lot thirteen to the City of Manchester from the current owners at that time, Louis and Lily Woldridge. This deed states, and I quote, "The City of Manchester, Iowa, assuming the obligation and responsibility of holding grand tour here in from any expense incurred resulting from paving said premises in the future." This agreement, which mentions paving, was made between the City of Manchester and the owners of the premises, and therefore should be honored by the city. Real estate law states that agreements of this nature run with the land unless they are later deleted. No such solution is written in our abstract. This agreement exempts us from being assessed for any paving unless thirteen and fourteen, which was the premises at the time the agreement was made. When we had a similar assessment statute as at the time of the bike path project in two thousand and five, the city attorney agreed that this agreement was valid and must be honored. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Respectfully submitted, Mike and Kathy Groo.
Kathy. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the bike path runs along the west side. Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about the bike path and the front?
Well, at the time of the bike path, we had the same situation, and the, the part of the inner abstract was honored by the city and the city attorney. So that was, but this runs with the premises and runs with the land.
It doesn't specify west side, north side, south side, because it's the premises.
Okay, see, what I'm reading here is conveys the west thirty feet. That's why I was curious.
Yeah.
That's what they don't make.
The Woldridgees gave that portion of lot thirteen to the city.
That was the land out here.
To create the Really Drive.
Okay. Thank you, because I wasn't, I wasn't understanding. Thank you.
And I know, Brian, you and Brenda also sent something here, and I think there were several questions on here that you wanted answers on. And so we have invited the streets. Jason Hates here from the streets, and Perry Peterson also helps with all the streets and a lot of this stuff. And then Ryan, if you want to weigh in as well on some of the questions that they had as to the reason why we are doing this street project. One of them was how it even got started. Maybe we can start from the beginning with that, because I know we were, I'll let Tim maybe first address that portion.
Sure, so this project is part of our capital plan that we work on. We, we try to plan things out for five years, work our way through what's going to happen next. And so we were, we are working our way into town from East Main Street. We started off out there with what Wes Shulte did, Meadowbrook subdivision. The next step was coming in what we did two years ago. And that was from basically Anderson Street to Meadowbrook, combining that in. And the next phase was going to the three-way stop. We have some underground work that needs to be done, sanitary sewer. There's more than one sanitary sewer in that area. Part of the challenges we have, and it was noted in Mrs. Faust's letter that her sewer had probes. Well, she is on a shallow sewer line. Her sewer line actually runs to the east and dumps into a manhole and runs back to the west. So we're correcting that issue out there and fixing it with one sewer line. If I'm mistaken on that area, you're good. And so that'll actually be deeper and help fix the issue of her freezing out there as well. But it does clean up the intersection as far as our sewer. It'll allow us to have better capacity for development going to the east. We'll be replacing water main, which also helps us with our low pressure system out there by providing a better quantity of water by going to that larger pipe. When we look at doing a street project, we look at the surface, what needs to be done there, and we look at the duration that that street project will last. So a new concrete street, we anticipate to be a fifty-year project. When we look at the underground pipe, we do televise the sewers, and we don't look at what the history is of the water mains and how the water mains are. If those are, you know, thirty to fifty years old, we want to replace those because we don't want to tear up the street twenty years later, and have a good street that we're tearing up because we're doing underground stuff. So when we look at doing this project, that's the reason when we do the sewer and water, we also do the service lines from the houses out to the property line, because that's the biggest expense homeowners have when they have a service line that is collapsed or leaking or whatever is repairing that street. So this gets everything new underneath the street and enhances or extends the duration the street will live. Anytime we cut into a street, it shortens the street's life. But that's kind of that step. And this corner is where we were looking at. After we're done with here to the three-way stop, then Anderson Street needs to be done. We have sewer issues there and watering issues, and as you go up that street, we were looking for places to start and stop. Obviously, money is an issue for us, and we had to figure out best place to stop. If we had more budget, if we could stretch our dollar further, we would have stopped up on Fayette Street after we got through on Anderson Street from Anderson up to Fayette from Maine. That wasn't a good stopping point. We had to cut back where our dollars were at. Otherwise, we've gone up to Fayette. Right now, we're really trying to just understand how far our dollars are stretching and get the best extension we can out of these projects. Ryan, did I miss anything?
We covered the basis there as far as the process or where we're at in this overall plan there. We did, you know, after seeing the letter, we looked at with the eighties, I mean, obviously, there's future phases coming, and we did resurface from Bailey Drive West to Brewer in two thousand and ten, and that street's showing that its next phase is gonna have to be reconstruction too. So again, we look at utilities, and that's, city's been very conscious of what's underneath the pavement, and they have chosen to use some asphalt work to, as Tim said, stretch the budget in instances where the underground is good. One thing in this segment is we do have sound storm sewer, so that's being re-alized, which is the intakes being replaced. So those things are reviewed on a project-by-project basis and trying to try to get the best return on those expenses. And construction costs are going up. They have gone up quite drastically over the last two years. We're trying to be hopeful. I mean, we're bidding, I think contractors are showing a little more interest in the past, but when it comes to special assessments that are preliminary, they are upper limits. So we do tend to estimate them a little high. That way, the intent is we get bid prices that do come in under, and the final assessments are typically a little bit lower than those preliminary numbers we've had. I'll say once or twice in the last twenty years or so where they've been, would end up being final because the bid prices came in higher, but.
This is the not to exceed.
This is a not to exceed amount right now.
And that one was like right after COVID, wasn't it?
Um, it wasn't too long ago.
Yeah, because we didn't know what to expect because of supply chain issues, if I remember correctly.
So realistically, we're only, the only gain, as far as I'm concerned, what you just said, the only gain is with the water. The sewer will remain the same size, so we're not gaining, really gaining anything on the sewer part.
We're correcting an issue that we have with the sewer, because there are two lines there. It'll improve the flow through there as well. Jason, you want to?
And actually, that, that will get upsized.
They will get upsized, maybe as well.
Yeah. So those will be really the two, because traffic flow isn't an issue, because it's gonna be the same amount of traffic flow. So surface cosmetic, cosmetic, it's not gonna change anything that way as far as where the sidewalks and stuff are. Now, the pedestrian traffic along the sidewalk, I'm worried about because it's all commercial there. So we're not gaining anything by doing a bike trail through there, which my concerns are on the bike trail. You know, you've got a bike trail coming through a bunch of commercial buildings where I have big trucks turning in out there all day long. The Cork and Bottle has businesses or trucks and vehicles turning in. And we also have it at Carl's Feet. So now we get into an issue where a bike rider gets hit by a customer of mine. The customer sues me, sues my house because it's adjoining. You know, that's my main concern, is now you're directing a bike path through there, which it's spotty at best. I mean, we're, they usually come down through the residential from Baum Park. So really, that connection there is very, in my, in my thinking, is the better way to go than trying to come down in front of all of our commercial buildings.
Yeah. What we're trying to do is tie them together. So obviously, we have bike paths going down Bailey Drive, but we're looking at extending the bike path from Anderson Street, from Maine and Anderson, up to Baum Park to tie in there.
Right.
But we also have the path to the west, and we don't have a good tie-in. I understand what you're saying as far as the sidewalk concerning and going to widen bike trail. You know, we're still gonna have pedestrians either on a sidewalk or a trail. Either way, you're gonna have pedestrians going through there, but it's just trying to connect that together. So, you know, I know with the city, we're doing the snow removal on trails, and it's easier if we can continue on the trail as opposed to jumping off because there's a sidewalk and trying to find a place to jump back on to continue on that trail. So this smoothes that out as well.
And we have the bike trail that goes around like Walmart and all that. I mean, that area too, and it's a lot of traffic there as well. So it's still a way to keep pedestrians out of the street, and it gives them a little more width. And I know when I'm seeing mothers walking with their little kids in strollers, and they got one on a bicycle, it's nice to have that width as well for that.
Bike trails are eight feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, yeah. Sidewalks now have to be five.
And do they also know that, like, once we put that trail in, we assume?
We assume responsibility, cleaning and maintaining it.
And the bike trails on both sides or just?
No, just the north side.
Just the north side.
Did you have your hand up there, Mary Ann?
Why did we designate a bike trail instead of just a normal five-foot sidewalk?
That was part of our, our trail plan that we have within the city, trail extension, new connectivity. So, you know, eventually, we'd like to get, so the trail does a big loop around the community.
But in some areas, could you just get by with a normal five-foot sidewalk instead of doing a?
And that's where we're filling in right now. I mean, we do have a lot of trail locations, like on Anderson Street right now. You, you go through on sidewalks to get to Baum Park from where the trail ends on Main and Bailey Drive.
Well, that brings up a point there that you mentioned that the city's gonna stop instead of going to Fayette Street. But yet, I'm on a corner lot, so they're gonna go around the corner and attack me with the eight-foot sidewalk to almost end my property, and that's gonna sit there for another two years till they, if I was correct, at twenty-six, they're gonna start the Anderson Street project. Was on paying for that part of the sidewalk for two years, but the city won't continue on with theirs?
No.
But we'd still maintain that eight foot.
Yeah, that's fine, but I'm still paying for it. So why should I pay for two years in advance if the city's not gonna continue their program? If they went away till twenty-six and then start mine and assess me, fine. I may be there, I may not be there, but.
The property you own is only getting spied for five foot, so.
A normal sidewalk.
Right. So you're gonna, you're gonna get that no matter what, right?
And I, no, I understand all that, but looking at the sheet that I was given, the curb and gutter is gonna be at least a third of my assessment. And then I'm gonna still pay for going up Anderson Street for whatever, how many feet it is.
Of sidewalk.
Of sidewalk, correct.
Yeah, so whether it was a trail or a sidewalk, it'd be the same.
I, I know, but I'm just saying that it's just, it's gonna be an added expense to me for that project going around the corner, and the city's not going to continue on with that for another two years.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the reason for going around the corner was to get those two intakes in at the end of Anderson Street, where it drops down.
Yes.
And then to get the water and sewer stuff far enough north for the next Anderson Street project and to get far enough out of the way to not affect your driveway the next time.
That's a good summary. Basically, we, in trying to pick a point to stop and start a project, we do try to figure out how we can extend utilities far enough from pavement. Or there is going to be, anytime you have two connections, you have to go pass and then come back and cut into it for connection. So there's a, it would be an asphalt patch or ten or fifteen foot on end of that. Now, on the assessment, same time we have those connecting points, we, we track what was done in the past and what's done this year. So like, this project on the east end does tie into some work that was done two years ago. So the work that was assessed two years ago is not, oh, we don't overlap. And even if some of the work overlaps, assessments meet each other.
Did that make sense to you, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be paid now or paid later.
Right.
I'm sure, but you stop there.
Yep, it's a good question.
If I'm gonna be assessed for that, then why is the city stopping there?
Hmm.
Because of the curb and gutter, I would assume going to Anderson Street.
Yeah.
To up till where they're stopping at mine.
Yeah, we, we, we met with you out there. We wanted to get far enough north to adjust your parking lot and driveway approach and everything this time. So you didn't have a, you know, if we stop at EOR, we would have to match it. You'd have some goofy little angles in there for two to five years ago.
So whenever we get back to Anderson.
Twenty-six, I, I should be done with.
Everything stays on schedule.
Yeah, because you're not going all the way to into my property.
No.
No, we're getting the sidewalk just north of your parking lot. Yeah. So it's still. Bike path on the north side of that is gonna cut across and go right by the liquor store there, and then go up to Baum Park?
I'm trying to remember if we were doing the trail on the east side of the road or the west side.
It's the east side.
Yeah.
And there's the elevations.
And that's another dangerous intersection to cross, you know, road lane street traffic and it's the little liquor store traffic. The west side of that going up on the residential, so you got to go up to Baum Park, then you'd only have residential traffic going across from the trail.
I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the elevations, the different ground elevations through there, and how close some of the houses are, there's not a way to really do that with that trail on the west side.
There was trails right to the curb out going past the wall that, I mean, the trail was right next to the curb and gutter.
It, it's not ideal for us to do that and mess up those, those areas. It's easier.
Traffic there.
Well, there is, but at least at that intersection, there was a stop sign going from the northbound, come down to the intersection of Main Street. So they do have a stop at least there. So you're trying, it'd be the turning traffic coming through there, right?
Yeah, like the sort of coming out traffic in the Main Street, going in traffic in the Main Street. Oh, yeah, there's a lot more turning and stuff going on there.
Yeah.
Because weren't we kind of hoping when we did Bailey Drive that we were gonna do the trail on the other side too, so that people didn't have to cross the highway when they were doing that? And we ran into something else that way too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, when you do that long-term planning, you start looking at fitting that width in there and what you need for width. We're a flat community, but we're not that flat, unfortunately. And then we have houses that are built at certain elevations, so you start messing with driveways and trying to get the elevations in with ADA compliant requirements. There's a lot of things that we have to look at and play into it to make sure we're meeting those requirements without messing up too many yards. One of those, if you look at Darryl Rich's property over on the corner of Styles and Main, when we put that trail in there, and you start looking how much had been cut in elevation to the, those are things we had to look at when we put that trail in, how we end up. Whether it's the trailer or sidewalk, it's just this width, I guess.
So just so I got this correct, we're gonna come up over Bailey Drive. We're gonna cut in front of the Greaves Place, stay on the south side of Main.
No, the trail will be on the north side of Main Street.
So it's gonna cut across Main Street right there at that intersection, go over Anderson, and then go up to Baum Park.
At some point, right now, it's projected to go that way.
Right. And then when we get into Baum Park, then through Baum Park to get onto the bike path that goes up and around the complex. Okay.
It is amazing how many people do ride that up and around through Baum, up around the Ball Diamond, all the way out past the brush, brush dump, down through, all the way down to the bridge. My wife's made me do it a couple times. I didn't like it, but I made it. So trails, bike paths, I think they are important. They make a town, they make a town look nice. They show progress. It shows that people care about their community by updating to trail systems, updating to bike systems. You drive out Bailey Drive, and it seems like you're always seeing somebody walking, biking. It's, it's super popular. I remember when we were doing the East Main project out further. Perry and Jason both, which have been around the city for years, no offense to Perry, a lot longer, but anyway. Perry always explained to me that the sewer system wasn't built fifty years ago to handle the capacity that's out there. Now, the Good Neighbor Home has gotten so much larger. Good Neighbor Home gave this with all them duplexes. So what is our sewer, what's our pipe dimension somewhere right around, say, in front of the Greaves home? I'm just using that as a spot. What's the high one, six or eight?
Eight, the high one's eight.
So sewer line out there is eight? What do we put in our new ones out further? They're twelve, right, right in front of Walco Simon's at the time. Yeah. In that asphalt patch now, there's an eight-by-12 reducer to tie the new into the old. Then right in front of Bobins, we've been babying for the last eight months. A fairly large collapse and a bad manhole that we have been doing what we can to get by, hoping that it would be replaced in this project. If it doesn't happen in this project, it'll happen next summer. Because it will collapse. It, it has. We've done a few spot repairs here and there to get by. But the manhole and probably a fifty feet on each side of it in front of Bobins needs to be addressed right away.
I think that because we continue to do streets and therefore do water and sewer updates and so on, that we have a pretty good system going in town. I know there's still places that need to be done, but it was brought up to me by a member of the community the other day that we've never had a boil water issue here. And it's because we keep doing work, we keep repairing things, and we keep working on them and so on. So we aren't having the problems that some cities are having because they're letting their things go bad. I really think that it's important to do these. I know that we had a sewer break in front of our yard, and if I had not had insurance for it, it would have been a very expensive process to have that dug up and fixed and so on. Luckily, we have the insurance, and so, you know, the insurance covered it for us. But it can be a very expensive process for, for homeowners if something goes wrong. And I just feel like we need to keep working to improve as we can along these streets so that we don't have those problems, because we have too many that pop up anyway just because you can't get to all of them fast enough. But I really think it's important that we get this done and bring these up to date.
I have a comment. I do not believe the assessments are fair, that the citizen should have to pay for curb and gutter because it's actually should be part of the street, not for them to pay. And I know people, Lois, for example, if she has to pay for this assessment for the sidewalk and her, we are that, she's gonna build a poor house, she tries to put her house up for sale, because she does not have money. And I think probably other people are in the same boat. We are not all the same, God, even though you say we are, but we're not all the same.
I know, I don't, I don't mean like that, that we're all the same.
Right, but I don't think that assessment is fair at all, and I think that resolution should be changed, that I think the city should pay for that curb and gutter, not. That I think the city should pay for that curbing gutter, not the citizens, because it's part of the street. So it is, it is a hardship. Like I said before, when I voted for no, but it's a hardship for these people.
But we've been doing this and we've been doing this for so many years. How is that fair to all the people who've been doing it that way for the how many years?
Well, when they first started to do it, then they got the group writing that they were gonna have to pay for it. So when is the right time to change the resolution? And you do the whole town say, well, I guess. You guys really shouldn't have paid for the city shut up. I just don't think it's right.
Is there a history on how we started doing this? Because it happened to be long before me.
Three oh eight South Wayne Street. Mayor Kramer and I were on the board when we started this street improvement project with the late eighties, early nineties. I don't remember the exact year. It was it was a challenge at that time to find the money to do a street project. Prior to that, we were doing a lot of steel coating. And on sand base, without sub base. And the citizens were really upset that we had to do something to give them better streets in our community. And between the local option money and and coming up with this program with assessments. Uh we were able to come up with a multi-year streak, but I'm really proud that it's been continued all these years. Hundreds of people that paid thousands and thousands of dollars and contributed to that project. As part of why we have quality streets pretty much throughout the whole community. You'd have to hunt to find a city that has as good a streets. I do think it might be good for the council to take a look at the 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 street improvement plan as far as the assessments and. And the low income impact that has on low income, fixed income people. I I would certainly think that's a good idea to to take a look at, but not in the middle of a project. This has already been planned. Uh you've got the money invested in engineering and design and. When you're not in the middle of a project would be the time to say houses, or you could even, you could adapt it, I suppose, as far as the who pays how much assessments in the next few months. I think it might be good to take a look at that because the costs have changed. The other thing that will impact this is what's the state gonna do with city funding in the next session? Cause that's gonna be a dramatic impact, not only on the street projects, but on everything in the city still. It might be a good time to take a look in your budget sessions or how are we gonna do this and where can we find money to do that? Going back to the very beginning when you know Kramer and I had those first councils back in the early nineties, put this together and came up with this idea. Remember that meeting we had in the courthouse? We had a what? A couple hundred people crowded into the courthouse because we were going to southwest neighborhood, South Third Street, South Fifth Street. They were all low income people. And they were really upset that the people on Doctor Street didn't have to pay an assessment. And now they were gonna be required to. So. We as a council at that time made a commitment to those people that if we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it long term to create some equitability. As much fairness as we can and spreading out the cost to get everybody to work together to to eliminate our our street. Problems. And along with the street problems, as uh. They've they've spoken here about the sewer and water and infrastructure under the street. That's been another huge benefit that's come. From doing total reconstruction instead of just seal coating and type. I do think it's good to take a look at the impact it has on low income and how how these how do you help people that are put in the bad situation? Have some sort of a formula that makes it fair, as fair as we can. It's always difficult. Every street project has its. Problems. It can never be a popularity contest. Uh if you ask everybody on every street project, oh, we should do it or whether we shouldn't, you're probably gonna get a half a dozen people and say this is a crazy idea. But thinking long term about the future of the community and. And getting good quality water lines that don't that don't rupture on a Sunday afternoon in February. It it takes long term planning to do that. So. I know that Southwest neighborhood over south of the hospital when we did that with nine, six, seven years ago. Some of those water lines didn't have any metal in them at all. They were over a hundred years old. It was just a tube of calcium and rust. It's just unbelievable. And if you don't, if if you think, well, this is okay, just get by, kick the can down the road year after year. Eventually, you had some serious, serious problems because these projects never get cheaper. It it's difficult. We never want to make light of the problem of how it gets paid for. But if you put it all on the taxes. And the taxes go up. And that's a that's a burden to the same people. So.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So when is a good time to work in this resolution? The ten year from now?
Well, what he said, whenever we do our next street project.
So twenty six?
One of the things the council can do as we look at this assessment program, maybe we look at a way to help uh people that are. Uh low income or elderly to find a way to offset some of those costs. And that that would be something for us to look at and discuss, okay, what are the thresholds they have to meet? To be to qualify for that. And then we can look at ways to reduce their costs. Um and and you know, that that there are different programs out there. I I know there is funding through the state. Um I was showing. Um a program through the state that they can apply for for seen elderly in low income housing or low income households. Uh to qualify for assessment breaks. Uh what the paper court is exorbitant because it comes to the state. And so maybe the council would like to look at a little easier way for us to sit there and say if they meet. Uh sixty percent L M Y or lower moderate income of what the average income is for Manchester, we can provide them with a percentage. Uh discount on what their assessment is.
So who would pay?
The city pays for that. I mean, if it comes out of the taxpayer. Fund one way or the other, whether it's an assessment towards a specific project or it's. Covered across the board. Now, a lot of our projects were. We're using local option sales tax, which means, you know, people that are shopping locally are supporting this. Uh we do use road road use tax funds to help with this as well. Uh and those are your gas taxes, your car registration and stuff like that. We do have to use general obligation bonds and that's your debt service. And so we do have to issue that as well because again. The cost of doing road road projects has gone up so much. Uh I think a year ago, we did an example of what it was to do a project in two thousand ten versus twenty twenty. And how many more blocks of street we were able to do in two thousand ten for the same dollar amount they had in twenty.
That's why we break them up in phases now, especially the really long streets, because we just can't afford to do the whole thing. And then we wouldn't have to stop and we could finish and. I'd have to do it twice. Um how come the local option sales tax isn't looked at? Cause I know there's a lot in that fund.
We are looking at that. We're using portion of that funding for this project.
But not for the citizens that have to pay these exorbitant assessments.
Well, it goes towards the project itself. So you you have your total project costs. Now, when we look at our special assessments, we're looking at things that are specifically benefiting the joint property owner. Driveway, sidewalk, water, sewer. And we say curbing gutter because we talk about curb appeal. What we don't assess is portion of the road. Other communities do assess portion of the road, and they also look at going out three hundred feet from the road. And we just limited it to just directly in front of the property. And we look at specifically just curbing gutter, water, sewer, because those lines, water sewer service lines are specific to that property. Sidewalk driveway specific to that property.
That's the biggest, this is the biggest pill for me to swallow. And I'm sure the rest of the property owners have to is uh for me. Working very hard for my dollar. You know, watching the driveway and a sidewalk get ripped up, put back, there's no gain. There there's no gain for it for me out of that. When I buy a piece of equipment for my work, I know I'm getting something for that dollar. And this is, yeah, we might, and you know, I've never had a sewer issue. I've never had a water issue. Granted, if if they're getting old, they probably best to be replaced. I understand that and I understand about. Uh you know, the community as a whole. The biggest thing is, I don't care who it is in here and you blind yourself if you said no. If this was going in front of your house and you were having to pick up a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar tab, you'd be pissed too. I'm I'm just speaking honestly. That's how I am. Everybody knows me knows I'm gonna speak the truth and. You know, the other thing that I look at, I was elected to basically keep the money down, to curb spending. You know, that's the biggest thing for me. You know, we're in debt. We're broke, we're in debt. And you know, you got a one point six million dollar thing in my my view. What other priorities should be brought up? I mean, to me, when I heard the uh. Meeting with the heads, the boost pumps right away clicked on my head that that should be one of the thoughts. It is to get water pressure throughout. Uh you know, if you can't take a shower and you can't flush the stool, you're gonna have some angry people. You know, that that's my biggest take on this is, you know, uh you know, you put another one point six million on top of what money in debt, you know, now we're at almost thirteen. Now, that's a lot of money. And I was elected. To curb spending. I was elected to curb spending. I'm sitting in this seat because I was elected by the people to curb spending. I understand about, you know, making the city great, but the people aren't, that's not what the people are looking at. Times are tough. This is expensive for me and I can afford this. Poor Dolores, Lois, I feel my heart goes out for you. Th- this is crazy. It I I'm honestly, as we talked the other day, this, my heart goes out to you. Because I can afford this. I don't like it, but I can afford it. Uh some others can afford it, but for for people that didn't vote for it. I didn't vote for it. I don't, I didn't want it. But I understand the necessity of of doing it, but. It is, it's a hard pill to swallow. But like I said, I I was elected to uh basically change this city's direction. And I guess, you know, now's the time for us to get it out there. I was elected. To curb spending and to watch what's going on and to make this make sense. Um in my opinion, this would be one right off the bat that I don't agree with the street project. I would rather spend that money on the boost pumps. And and have the infrastructure set up. You know, we're already dealing with a few issues there, but with that, oh. Won't say anymore. It's the hardest thing to consider is. A lot of the curves and gutters, like in my house on the corner there, that was all just done not too long ago. And then it's all really good. I mean, it looks really nice. All the sidewalks are in good shape. But yet they're all gonna be tore out. I mean, I could understand everything dilapidated and cracked and, you know, broke up and falling apart. But they're taking out perfectly good sidewalks and driveways. And just because of the move, which in my sense, thinking is, you know, that should have been part of the main street project. Cause everything is fine, you know, to the homeowners. Homeowners already have their nice house. Some have just put them in. You got down the street that just put in that giant sidewalk in front of his house, not even what? Seven, eight years ago or something like that, brand new sidewalk. And I know the over there at his place. You know, the green place that's got all new sidewalk, new driveways and stuff all just forward. And now it's all getting tore out. It's like. Um if you're you're gonna come in and wreck it, shouldn't you be the one to put it back? You know, the way it was fine to begin.
You know, I I do know the intersection of Maine and Bailey Drive does need to be replaced. There are some sinks. Right there by the storm storage takes, we're gonna have to do some additional work. If we don't. Do this as a street project, that's fine. That's a council decision to do that. But if we don't do it, we will still have some expenditures to do in that. In that area, whether, you know, replacing the sanitary sewer manhole and line there, we're gonna tear out the street. We're gonna have an intersection that we're gonna have to still tear out and do. At that point, we're cobbling together. New sections, this new curb like you were talking about and and by way through there. And we're just patching little segments instead of doing a big swath, making it also that's together. We can do it. That's the council's direction. That's that's something we can do. There's still gonna be a cost to it. We're not necessarily just gonna. Save one point six million dollars because we're not doing this project. There's too old work that needs to be done. Uh and I I understand that there are a lot of places that have invested in their properties to replace sidewalks. We we don't want the bike trail dilapidating. There's a reason we we're not gonna wait till that's falling apart before we fix it. We we have traffic that uses that. Uh but yeah, it's, th- there are challenges and it's always that, where do you start, where do you stop?
I got a question back to the the area that we're doctoring out Perry. I don't know if you'll have the answer to it or not, but. If we don't do the street project. And that collapses. Chances are it's not gonna be, we're not gonna be standing right there when it happens. So the time that it'll take to get that back functional, what kind, what are? I mean, is there an idea?
We would have to instantly start bypassing.
And 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 I have no idea what any of that means.
We'd have to start at the van hole. In front of. Yeah, there originally was in front of the. Simon's old place and pump down to Anderson Street. For the duration of getting that fixed with all the flow that's coming from the Good Neighbor Home campus and all of everything.
We got West Schultzies as well.
So everything from the east end of basically Bobins.
It would, it would cause problems quickly. I mean, even when the top broke out of it here, what? Three months ago, even a few pieces in it, we had manholes backed up all the way to the Good Neighbor Home.
So then that makes it where toilets can't flush then or?
That makes where you take the chance of getting it backed up in the basement soon.
Okay.
So you can have pressure, but if it can't go anywhere, it's just gonna go right back in your basement.
And I mean, we have all the footage and stuff of that too. It wasn't like, you know, we that's. Ryan saying that at all. I have I have this of, I mean, people I had to show you guys too. I mean, it's not, you know, what what the actual. Uh condition of the sewer really is. It's, yeah, some, you know, something actually interesting to take a look at. It's all clay lines that are misaligned and so.
I think the council needs to have a conversation on this before we go and pass anything.
Well, I think we can still pass something that it's necessary. Can we agree that it's necessary to fix the street and everything? I think if I'm what I'm hearing from this meeting is that.
Yeah, what what I would propose is we table the resolution assessment for two weeks.
Okay.
Council meeting.
Okay.
Uh and have a discussion again with with the council, let's see how they would like to proceed on this.
Okay.
So that we keep this process moving forward.
Okay. But just for transparency reasons, what I'm hearing tonight, can I, if if I can do it all together? And I don't disagree. And I mean, I've been assessed stuff. I I have family that's been assessed stuff that it was not very easy. I know the city has done a very nice job. Of working with them for how they pay it over a period of time to make that happen. Um it's unfortunate that the price of everything keeps going up. Um every year and we're coming off of the whole COVID thing that has increased things a lot. So what I'm understanding from everybody is maybe we're not opposed to the necessity of it. It's just, it's the curb and gutter. Assessments that we'd like to see done differently. Am I correct? Yes. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Probably not, but but you you know, it is still, it just goes back to the fact that I I think there's. So this is my first meet. We're in, we're in there. And there's a lot to dive into. And you know, I'm looking at when I, when I heard about the department heads, I just think there was a lot more priority. In other um sections of the city that needs to be addressed versus this. Granted, you know, you couldn't tell me, you know, right now, is that gonna fail this year, next year? You know, could you limp it along through a couple more years, you know?
It needs a patch in it, right? As we're sitting here.
As we're sitting here.
Yeah.
A patch.
Yeah. How long does the patch last?
And you can't do a, you can't do a board through new ceramic. Uh on it. I mean, that technology now they did in front of my house in Delhi where they ran a uh. Uh ceramic thing and they can seal that back up just like crystal clear. Uh they can do that very low cost because they just go in and they can just bore right in the thing, take out any roots or whatever and. And do what they did in front of my house in Delhi.
And those are always, they're, they are always options out there.
You know, that would, that would be something that could limp us along down the road and allow us to access funds for something that I consider a lot more priority than the street.
And correct me if I'm wrong, grants that we used to get for this kind of stuff just don't, they're not really there anymore. I mean, unless we're doing something.
You know, when we started this process back nineteen ninety-three, when I say when the city started this process, nineteen ninety-three, there were community development block grants that allowed them. Especially if it serves a little bit in modern income housing area. Those grants have dried up. They don't have those anymore. Uh we do have entitlement funds through our. It's our P A A Regional Planning Authority that we're a part of. We get about a hundred twelve thousand dollars a year that we get into the fund. That we can use on primary routes. They have to. That we can use on primary routes. They have to listen with the federal government as primary routes been being, so this is one that qualifies it. For we're getting about six hundred forty-five thousand.
And entitlement funds are funds from the DOT, similar to grant funds, their money that we would not have to pay back. But they can only be used on specific roads, um, so we can't just use it on Anderson Street. It has to be on a.
On a primary route that is designated by.
And that is, we were doing that on East.
So those grants would only be usable for Maine and Franklin.
But and there's a couple others that we, I'd have to go through the, uh, pull this burning room is one of them cuz we use it on that for that white tuffing project. Obviously, it's federal funds, so they have to follow federal guidelines, which is why we typically wait till we have accumulation over five hundred thousand dollars. Before I apply it towards a project because it adds more complexity to it.
And we weren't looking for the full cost of this project. Um, what we had was about six hundred thousand. The rest was gonna come from local option. Road use tax, a little bit from water and the sewer funds, and then the entitlement funds were, were kind of how we had it split out.
Thank you.
As we're looking at budget.
So if we don't do this, we lose those monies in certain cases, right?
It gets held on.
Gets held on to until later.
So we have another project. Uh, with this project, this isn't like the airport where I can, I can only accumulate for three years and then drops off. This one can can accumulate for a while. Uh, what happens is other partners in the RPA area, part of Delaware, Jackson, Dubuque.
And RPA stands for.
Those affiliation.
Thank you, Aaron.
They, those cities within those areas can use those funds as well. And so we borrowed ahead because city had a surplus funds. And our entitlements want to pay that back. Um, but if we have large balances, DOT gets a little irritated with us for not spending that too.
So if we table this for two weeks. Project wise, what does that affect? Any event that we do push it through? Or we're just?
Ryan, was the DOT letting and stuff?
The DOT letting is January seventeenth, so look here is the following council meeting, twenty second, twenty second, so. Basically with the special assessment procedure, before you award the contract, you'd have to make. Motions on the resolution necessity. So you, that's the key thing, um. If you table this the next meeting, you just have to act on this, or to acting on that or the contract if you're going to, to. Allow to proceed with this assessment. So if you want.
We can still go after that.
So if we table this, we not only got to vote to do it or not do it, and then vote for who wins the bid, right? Both in the same meeting.
It'd be both in the same meeting. Maybe and there's a potential timeframe that. I anticipate DOT would have anything back to the city for the twenty second meeting, but it might have to be February. Or you could delay action on the bid, but eventually you're gonna have to decide if you're gonna use assessments or not. And then decide if you're gonna award the project.
So now when we send this out for bids, if we drop the assessment portion of it, which is would be the curb and gutter.
Mm-hmm, and sidewalks.
Sidewalks and stuff and figure out. So if we, if we have more discussion on this. We're gonna have to make that decision on how, who's paying what? And get bids back in and vote all on it in two weeks? Between this meeting and in the meeting in two weeks, would we have a special meeting for discussing this?
No, we have the next, next Monday, the fifteenth, we do have a budget work session. And that's where we'll start going through our budgets with council, working our way through that.
If you can afford it.
Well, that'll be for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So we do those budget work sessions opposite city council meetings. Because they will take quite a bit of time to go through, work our way through those.
And maybe that should be discussed at the budget meeting before we plan the budget, to see if we need to plan.
But this is, this is a budget, this is a different budget. Yeah, the council already discussed this and put it into this fiscal year's budget.
We did that last.
I guess that's where I'm, I'm personally struggling is. Having the discussion on how all this will work out, where the breakup's gonna be on the curb, the gutter. Um, sidewalk, the driveway entrances, who's paying what, doing what, and then being able to send it all off to bid. Getting a bid back without having an actual sit down conversation about it. Like our, I I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna, we want to table it, discuss it later from the sounds of it. But wins later, when in two weeks we gotta vote on this.
I agree with you, Joe. I think it's, it's really pushing things to try to get it all done. I also think we need to remember that. If if we don't do assessments, somebody's gonna pay for this. Somebody's gotta pay for that sewer to be done. And so when we start looking at the cost, it's no longer going to be the city paying one point six. It's gonna be the city paying two point five or whatever. I mean, I'm, I don't what the amount's gonna be. But when you don't assess, somebody's gotta pay that, that part. It still has to be done. And so therefore, who's gonna pay it? And now all of a sudden, we owe more money again.
Which if I read the assessments properly, it's two hundred and forty-five thousand. Total assessment over the twenty property owners.
Yes, yeah, and that's, again, the assessments are paid over a period ten years or could be paid all at once. With with the payment of the assessment that goes into the street permit funds, which then we use to fund future street projects. So it's kind of like a revolving loan.
Ryan, what do other towns do? You take care of other towns.
Quite a bit, uh, we definitely, we do special assessments, uh. Last strawberry point has done them through the years. Um, some cities, uh, I would say our client base. Probably kind of fifty fifty on the major street projects, whether they assess or not. Um, since some cities have chosen not to do any special assessments, they pay out of the road use generally to geo bonds. Um, most communities work with their under the five thousand population, so they don't even get the entitlement funds. Uh, we work with Hopkins and Delhi. There are some funds through the RPA that are pretty limited, like twenty-five thousand dollars. They need every four or five years. So, you know, there's some funding there that City Manchester receives and is definitely a benefit based on our. Size of the community, um, you know, as far as kind of the process, the. The budget for this was actually done by prior councils, the planning to initiate the design plan. So what actually is on the DOT letting. Everything's there, but obviously contractors, whether you guys assess, decide to assess or not, contractors doesn't change. The way they look at the project, they're gonna put their bid on the total project.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you would choose not to assess basically that, those dollars that would be assessed to the property owners. Probably go under the geo funding or probably geo cuz it already uses speed.
So.
So it's really which pot, where does that money come out of then?
Oh, no, um, I just, Booney and Lois both raised their hand. Who wants to go first? Yeah.
If we're talking about tabling this. All right, what am I gonna do now that my sidewalk's all cracked up from the equipment that's been on it? My driveway is cracked. Out towards the street from all the heavy equipment. There again, I'm responsible for that debt.
I mean, basically, I mean, hers would be in the next inspection. If this gets kicked down the road. Her, yours would be in the next inspection when somebody came through and inspected your sidewalks that.
Can we, can we prove it was a contractor that cracked it when they were driving over top of it?
But when I asked about, uh, with the cracks in the sidewalk, the comment to me was. Oh, don't worry about it. The taxpayers will take care of it for you.
I don't know who told you that. Who told you?
Well, it's one of the construction people. When you have three or four different construction people out there working, how do you know what they're? If they're with the telephone.
Utilities, utilities, people can't speak for the city unfortunately, yeah. So, I mean, but yeah, you don't know who they are because there's different people every day. I get that. Yeah, yeah, I get that.
Those utilities will relocate it with the private in mind, so. You know, that's not really relative to, if you choose not to assess, that would still get completed with the project this next year. If you choose not to do the project, then the city would have to look back and say, how does that get addressed?
Right.
Cause mine broke the same way as hers.
Since the city, you know.
And the big trucks going when it cracked up too.
And you know, generally, if the utilities in, and there was some new fiber going in, it'd be their responsibility to fix it.
Right.
With the city directing them to relocate for the city's project. We're getting into a rare city, then do the project, cuz they might even turn back city and say. We need compensation for all the work we did if you're not gonna.
Right.
I'm, I'm concerned about this, the sewer break. For sure. So if that sewer, if we doctor it up for now. That whole section through there is all, it's all the same age.
Right.
So we might doctor up that.
Until eight inch.
Right, we might doctor that eight inch pipe right there for now.
Down to seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz they run.
We'll have to reduce a little bit with that sleeving on the inside of it from my, I'm guessing. So then if you come back. Five houses to the west, that's the same thing that could happen right there in that intersection.
Right. And it still doesn't really fix the real problem of, from Anderson Street. To the three way stop where the real problem's at, where it runs backwards, dumps another manhole and then runs back to the three way stop. That's the real problem. And then the sewer of Anderson Street comes underneath of that and ties in underneath of it in this, in this same thing.
Right.
The, that's where the real prob, I mean, yes, it's all broke up and it does need to be fixed, but the, the actual problem is.
So, it, I don't know if it's possible, so I'm gonna ask out loud.
Just a minute, Joe. Can I, Boone had a question. Did you have a question or did it get answered?
Well, you brought up the total assessments with that. For everything or just for curb and gutter, that two hundred and forty something?
That's the property owner side, so curb, gutter, sidewalks.
Bone sewer water.
Right, everything that's, that's broke down to the property owner side is two hundred and forty-five thousand.
How much would just the curb and gutter be for a total assessment?
It should be totally the bottom of Anderson.
So. The way it's broke down from the way I'm reading it, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim or Aaron, but sidewalk cost itself is. Is sixty-two thousand five fifty-eight, and then you got your driveway cost. This is amongst all the owners. Um, twelve thousand six, uh, hundred and five dollars, and then, um. You know, it breaks it down in each sidewalk and then curb and then driveway and stuff, so it's not like totaled all up together.
You don't, you don't have the total just for curb and gutter for all the assessed property.
Curb, curb cost is sixty-four thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
For the whole project.
For the whole project.
Cause again, like Lois, that's a third of my total assessment is curb and gutter. My parking lot is crap, needs attention. I can't do both, pay attention to the parking lot and do this special assessment. Something's gonna get kicked to the curb and that's gonna be a part of that. So it's like, again, we could knock that curb and gutter assessment off. Yeah, it's still a big pill to swallow, but it's a have to alive easier.
So my question, um, Tim, I don't know if it's possible, if you look at. Just the, the street project itself, cuz there's a separation between the, um. Special assessment and the normal project. Could we vote on the normal, just the street project itself? Separate from the assessment. Can we table the assessment on how the assessment's handled?
Yes.
But still vote the street project itself through?
That's what I was trying to get to, yes.
So.
We can take action on resolution eight and table resolution seven.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to get to, yeah.
Yep, that is correct.
Cuz resolution eight just proves the project like Joe was talking about.
Correct.
Well, you guys make it easier.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to when we were first starting that. We got there the long way around. It's all good, it's good discussion. Yes, Dean.
One other thing that comes to mind is earlier, earlier you do this, better bid you better get.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Too long, these contractors are getting, getting other jobs, less, less, less attractive.
Yeah, that's my, my biggest thing. I mean. I didn't grow up with a lot of money, so I, this definitely hits home when you talk about the assessment side of things. Bringing, you go back to when we started in nineteen ninety-two or ninety-three when we started doing this project and. Maybe the assessment needs to be relooked at. I mean, it's thirty years old. On that process, there has been some ratification throughout the time that I've been able to kind of dig up a little bit on. Some of the research I've done. So I mean, we have made additional improvements to the original program that wasn't so favorable possibly. But as far as like the sewer main, the sewer issues that we're having, you know, the waters, um, if we do go ahead with. Looking at another project that Brian had brought up that, um, Chad had said, you know, if that's a project that we do down the road. Do these water lines, are they gonna, the old water line's gonna be able to handle that new project? So that's, that's another angle that I kind of look at is not just looking at this current project, but future projects that might be. On a wish list or beginning stages of talk about, are, are we setting ourselves up for those as well?
So would we want to table the one and we can go ahead and vote on?
Yeah, if you want to table the resolution necessity, um, you can do that for two weeks. Uh, vote then on, uh, resolution eight regarding the, uh, approving. Uh, or ratifying the preparation, contract, contract specifications. Um, the one thing I I might ask the attorney on the resolution necessity. E- even if we passed the resolution necessity, I believe the council can, cuz this just sets the maximum. The council can amend that later on and waive or say, we're not going to assess curb and gutter, if that's what they want to prove.
You can do that. I mean, until you let the contract, you can walk away from it. Everything, really, you know, you haven't, you haven't accepted a bid, you haven't. But I mean it. It's really just a matter of which, which way you wanna back things out, you know, if you pass that, you're gonna go back and make, make sure you know what you're mending. I don't think everybody's gonna forget in two weeks.
So is this the proper time for me to make a motion to table the assessment portion of the project?
Resolution number seven.
Resolution number seven.
Uh, are we, I'm a close public.
Is this the right time?
No, no. Yeah, okay, we have a question.
I mean, I guess just to clarify, cuz I'm not a legal expert, but if they chose to pass a resolution assessing. Before anything goes final, there's still a whole flooding or project.
Right.
Completion of project, crowd project acceptance, there's still another special assessment hearing. At the end to actually approve the assessments. They could amend or change those assessments up to that last date.
Because that, cuz that last one has what the, the actual final assessments.
I don't think there's anything wrong with doing it either way. You're gonna get to this, if you wanna table the resolution and discuss all the details and pass it all at once. That's proper. If you wanna take out the special assessments from the resolution of necessity and pass it, I think you can do that. I think I just leave a table, the whole thing and put the whole, and you, you know what you're gonna be discussing when you come back and that's the assessment.
But if we do resolution number eight, that'll start getting our plans ready for bid, correct?
Right.
Right, we can speed that part of it up, correct?
That resolution is tight this special session, I mean.
Uh, it ratifies.
It ratifies.
It's, it's alright. That we could do that.
Okay, you can do eight and.
Yeah, and it doesn't specifically mention assessing in resolution eight, it's just ratifies the plans. Um, and then that's what I'll do.
And I think there's been discussion really on the plans last year.
We would have to make a modification on the first whereas, because it says whereas the city council ministry has adopted a final resolution of necessity. So we'd have to modify that.
Put in there considered. So we.
Or even just strike the first whereas.
I wouldn't strike it cuz I want at least let them know that we talked about it so that we are referring to the same project. So it ties up later when you come back to, but I'll help you with that. We would acknowledge we talked about it, we didn't make action on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so does anybody else in the public have anything else they'd like to say? Yes, Jen?
We got a house for, uh, we had a new curb and gutter put in, we paid for it. So now we needed a driveway for it, so the curb and gutter had me cut out in an area ten foot wide. But the city required me to get Iowa walls to cut it out instead of my contractor. So I had to pay around. So I had to pay around six hundred dollars to have that done. So I paid for this hunk of concrete out here. And uh. I don't own it at all, because the city requires me what I can to do that. So this this curb and gutter stuff. We got rental properties, and we gotta start swinging twelve fifteen thousand dollars in front of a house. You you can't, you can't get business doing that. It's not gonna work out. I don't know. I mean, I've been I've been doing this for thirty five, forty years. And you can't swing that kind of money for a rental house. And that's just reality. Now, uh. Over here, she can't pay that. And. It's just the way it is. And she's supposed to lose her house over that? There's there's people that. Gotta get out and meet some of these folks. I did when I did that, just I went I went over three hundred houses. There's a lot of people in this town that vote that don't have the money, and they live from social security check to social security check. And that's just the way it is. But uh it's like needs to be thought about a little bit before you start throwing fifteen thousand dollar bills at people.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Kurt.
Kurt, minor seven oh two East Howard Street. Jason, have you guys done any pricing on slip lining that bad spot or beyond?
We actually had one, one pipe patch put in there. Uh, Luke had put one right in front of my, what was the, when we were televising and stuff in there. A couple of years ago, the we shot the jetter out of pipe. So there is one pipe patch in there. I wanna say that was around ten thousand, but this is, this one is a little more extensive because of. Like I said, the manhole, the whole, the whole situation. So to answer your question, not, not an exact number.
We do, just so the council where we can bring it, give it to Tim, we've got recent projects that slip line of. Some are quite big, thousands of feet, tens of thousands of feet, so. For shorter projects, you're gonna see higher unit prices, but it's generally a slip line cost is is. It's more. If you care parent, just to open cup, but obviously you don't have the pavement for restoration, so it's not an apples to apples comparison, but. There's there's costs associated with that also.
Just to clarify, that means there's two spots in that section that are patched?
So we have, no, there's one, one patch.
One patch and one that needs it.
And one that needs.
So when this is all done, if we don't do the street project, we got two.
Two for sure.
And where the twenty twenty four project would be going, we would have two at that point that have already been patched. That line's compromised, for sure.
And it's still eight inch. You're not, like I said, that's, we're still not fixing our problem going up to twelve inch. And again, from from Anderson Street to the three way stop of. Well, you know, running opposite.
Right.
And not getting it into one line.
Would you allow a contractor to come in and start building a bunch of homes and stuff up? Where it's all gonna have to have all this new improved sewer and stuff come in, because there's so much more volume coming down? Isn't that some sort of a tax thing that should be considered ahead of the problem? I mean, like even with proving out there and all those houses that are out there now that are all coming down through the city. I mean, was there any kind of assessment done to those? To say, you know, you guys, you build all this stuff out here, we're gonna have to do some big improvements. To get all this to flow through, because our old lines aren't gonna handle it now. So. All this new construction that's going on around the city is coming down through old pipes. You're tying on to things that can't handle that kind of volume. So why is that being dumped on, you know, the people who are at the end of the line? Place the problem showing up.
Well, unfortunately, part of that is because of just age. Pipes don't last forever.
Right, right.
Pipe can handle quite a bit of flow, depending on what we have for elevation, this slope and stuff like that, but. When we start looking at the age of the pipe and the condition of the pipe. You don't tear into a street to replace that unless you're doing a street, and that's, again, it's that chicken and the egg. Which portion do you do? Uh, we we slip line a big portion of the pipe, uh, so there's sewer along the backwaters a couple of years ago, is where in fact. We have truck line repair up here, and that's what we did, that sold things up in the northwest quarter. Uh, we did some of that slip lining also down uh from West York plant up to Vine Street. You know, we're working on that where we need to, it's.
I understand all that, but I mean, when you start talking about assessing people for repairs and things like that. Some of those people out there who have money and, you know, the big rich homes and stuff, who want their sewers to go. You know, they should be helping pay for the new sewers in down that are so old that they're dumping into. That are now have to be improved because of that.
Well, a- a- a part of that is paid for by them using water sewer and paying those fees. We're now spreading those fees across more people.
I understand that, okay.
Okay, anything else that I was, I'm gonna get ready to close the public hearing. All right, at six fifteen, I'm closing the public hearing. And um I believe if we are going to table resolution seven, I need a motion for that. Take a second. Any other discussion by the council before I ask for a vote? Joe?
Voting to.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian? Okay, all right.
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
In one extension. Okay, and then before us, then we have uh resolution eight. We're gonna go ahead, do we have to change that from something different?
Modify the first whereas on that resolution to.
I would just confirm that it was considered and tabled for the next meeting, put it right in that whereas, so we have a clear record of what we did.
So agreed, whereas the city council, the city of Manchester, Iowa, has considered and tabled. The resolution of necessity in connection with the twenty twenty four East Main Street project and whereas detailed plan specifications, notice hearing, notice bidders and form of contract. Should now be prepared and filed by the city clerk. So if if the council is.
Okay, I need a motion on what she said. You can just say so moved if you're.
Resolution eight as amended by Aaron.
Here you go. All right, any other further discussion?
So that means we, the whole project or does the assessment has been tabled?
No, no, no. The assessment portion has been tabled. This is approving.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody clear? Okay. You're abstaining, and Joe?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for tonight's discussion. I really appreciate that. Okay. Um, next, we have a regular agenda um item. Item six point one, open burning request from Pat Dolan for the property at ten fifty South Third Street. Is Pat here tonight?
He's not here. He contacted me early in the summer. Uh, regarding a request to, he has, you know, where Pat Dolan owns property in South Third Street. Large pasture to back up to the river. He has a bunch of trees in the back area there he wants to burn. As opposed to carting him off to a compost site. Uh, two years ago, he he did. Light up a a pile back there and that was put out for the document permission from the council for open burning. Uh, he. Depending upon where he puts it, we need to verify it. He could be a quarter mile away from any inhabited residence. Um, and so that way it would not have an impact in that. If you look in the organs we just posted in there, that is one of the exceptions that would be allowable. And that's per what the DNR requires. So if the council wants to permit him to burn the pile. Uh, as long as he's a quarter mile away from the residents, that's something the council can do. Uh, it's just landscape waste, that's correct. You you can't use any accelerants, tires or anything like that, that's not permitted.
This was, didn't he have to do this like right after the tornado went through too, or was that somebody else?
This was closer to Anderson's. Uh, this would be further away from a lot of the locations of anything else.
Right.
Um, but it would be a quarter mile from the residence.
Is it residence, Tim, or building inhabited? I mean, would you? So like, uh, whatever, straighten or?
Do you know that distance, Tim?
Yeah, so if you go down, um, like you're gonna go to XL trailers, Pat lives right there on the left hand side.
Across from the old high plant, correct?
Yeah, it would be just about straight east of that heading back towards the river.
Right, straight across from where the old brush dump was.
Yeah, it's actually wastewater plants probably closest like berries across the river.
Jim, what's the definition of inhabited?
Well, if there's anybody, I think you can inhabit a commercial building that doesn't say, there's a resident, doesn't confirm it for residential, I can look.
You know, uh, uh, and that's what the legal definition, what is inhabited? To me, it's a place where you're sleeping, you stay, not necessarily a business, but I'll let the DNR and the city attorney put that up.
When this morning, be done during the day then or at night?
Uh, we we would just direct him to have it, so it's a north wind blowing it south out of town, southeast out of town. So we wouldn't have that coming into town.
So does he have, is he required to have fire department close by when he does something like this?
If if the council requires it, he can.
Is there a way that we can put a wording in there? I know, um, down southern Iowa, when we would do a controlled burn, we would have to call and notify the dispatcher. That we had a controlled burn going on, so that way the fire department was aware in case something went haywire.
Yeah, you know, we could actually have have that requirement.
That way he can, he calls and we know whenever it's happening exactly when he's lighting it, and then we can monitor it through however long it takes for. But we'll have an idea of where it's at, what time it's happening, more or less. Just a simple phone call go along the ways.
Out of the country, they're supposed to do it automatically in Delaware County.
I found out that the hard way. I didn't know that was the deal and we were going south and started a fire.
Yeah, uh, again, there there are more restrictions in rules, especially inside of towns as far as open burning, it's why we don't burn our. Longways that we have here in towns by the compost facility.
I think it'd be beneficial to not have him tracking that all through town. And the aspect that you always seem to drop a little bit of something as you're coming through town. And uh that's more work to the uh. Jason and his group of guys that have to maintain all that. If we can do it safely, I think it's not a bad idea.
Is he considered city limits?
Yes, that is a city limits.
You know, as long as he's only a quarter mile away, and I agree with a little bit of Joe, keeping it at a north wind, blowing it south shouldn't affect anybody. There again, high pressure, low pressure systems can change your.
Yeah, I was gonna say they can change pretty fast.
Wind goes. Um, having it monitored by the fire department, I mean, if there's somebody free that can kind of, you know, when he lights it. Gives the okay that, yep, it's good to go. I I probably don't have a big problem with it. Versus hauling it to the brush dump.
Right.
The problem with hauling it there is that we have to get rid of it, and it becomes a monetary problem for us.
Yeah, I I guess I. I would sooner have, when he burns it, or if the fire department wants to try to do it, it's a controlled burn on the proper night, the right night. Greenwood never burns.
Yeah, I don't know how long it's been sitting out there, but. I appreciate the fact that he called ahead of time. Looking, and and we're not trying to do this last minute. So if if the council approves it, he we know he's going to get it done this winter, because he'd like to do it while there's still following snow on the ground. So that way there's less of a hazard starting.
Next week, maybe?
If I'm really this correctly, he's gotta already make sure that he's in compliance of the rules established by the State Department of Natural Resources as it is. Uh, that's number six on that agenda, that piece there. And being a quarter mile away from any inhabited building, as long as he gives the. You know, the fire department a heads up, he's got to abide by everything anyway.
I don't think whoever to put in it specifically though.
Right, yeah, specifically put that in black and white, so then there's not any way being like, why didn't know?
So do we have a decision that's gonna be made or made? Do we know how far away it is yet?
Okay, so a quarter of a mile from wind blowing.
From the north to the south.
From the north to the south and he has to call.
Notification or not or or dispatch.
Okay, so with all of them.
I would make that motion.
And I would second it.
You get a letter?
Let me just make sure. So um we're in grand permission to burn as long as he's a quarter mile from any building any month. The wind is going which way?
And he's standing.
And must notify dispatch prior to the burn. Okay, and now I have it. So it's Mary Ann and Joe?
Need to follow up? Okay, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
It's not in the Iowa code or in our city code, but. It's in Black Slaw dictionary.
Okay. Uh, next item, uh, item six point two, North Fourth Street Storm sewer and street repair. I don't know, do you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, um, so what happened up there is we had a an intake locks that failed. It's an old cinder block, original. Um, intake out there that the front side of it collapsed, and we ended up. We went up and had a spot in the street that buckled, so we went up and and broke it down and turned out there was a stretch that's. I can't I can't remember the exact length, but it was all undermined. So we ended up, we dug it all out. Pack rock back in it, and so at the end of the day, it needs two new intake boxes, a stretch of pipe across it, and there's paving and a little bit of curb and gutter. And there, that's, it's, it basically just all deteriorated and couldn't, you know, and seen its life.
At the time, the weather was still holding pretty good. In before then, but now I think what we're looking at is probably gonna be spring.
And it'll be, you know, first thing out of the chute. For eastern Iowa is a little bitter on, uh, and they were. They were lower than anybody else that had cold weather on it anyhow, so.
Okay, I just need a.
I make a motion to go ahead and approve the North Fourth Street Storm sewer street project and award the contract to. Eastern Iowa Escaping. Thirty six, three fourteen point two five.
Wait here a second.
I'll second it.
Any further questions or discussion? Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, we need approved payment of invoice totaling twenty four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Key City Metal Works for the Shelley Park Pavilion.
This should be the final bill for that project. Um, that allows to move forward with closing out uh Shelley Park. Uh, we have everything installed except for the. Shade sale itself, and that'll go up in the spring.
But you don't want still on top of it?
And who puts that that shade up?
Our our street superintendent.
So as far as, as far as the. Envoys that we're paying that to Key City Metal Works, everything is already completed by them?
Yes. Yep, that's the final payment. Everything else is resolved.
I make a motion to approve.
Take a second. Uh, any discussion?
I think it looks great. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, uh, Joe?
Yes.
Just a second, I put this in the wrong place. Make the motion? Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Bill and Brian both have B, so I gotta get this to that, okay? Great, Joe, Bill, now go Brian.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Linda?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have motion to approve the payment to uh following downtown incentive grant to Honey Creek Furniture for the property at one fifteen North Franklin. In the amount of two thousand eighty seven eighty four, and that was for a facade grant. Any other questions?
So just to kind of clarify, I talked to Tim about this a little bit too, in case nobody else has caught this. We already voted to award that grant. Now this is just distributing the funds.
Yeah.
The the work has been done, uh, they've submitted the proper paperwork for reimbursement. Now we're willing, ready to put the reimbursement to them. The the work has been done. Uh they've submitted their proper paperwork for reimbursement. Now we're willing, ready to put the reimbursement to them.
Yeah. Mary Ann.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Joe.
Yes.
Okay. Next we have uh resolution nine, and that's for disposal of equipment from the police department. Did you want to speak to that chat at all or do you know anything about that?
This is the disposal to Bushmaster rifles uh to test the police.
I see now.
Original three round bursts. And they're obsolete and. By right, you need specialized training on it. No one has it except for me and all you know, he's in the army. So that's why we, I reached out to Eastler and they said that they would. Take them off their hands.
It does require a special license in order to obtain these. For that reason, it's difficult to dispose of them as well.
Now it shoots a two-two-three, so it'll be like an AR, correct? So it'd be an AR platform rifle, shooting a two-two-three round. Uh does require class three federal gun license to have it, and I don't have one of those, so.
But you were trained.
Right, I was trained in it, but until I get a class three, I can't even have it. So it's one of them things where, from my knowledge of the weapons and how laws are with the gun laws, there's. Yeah, they gotta be sold back to a gun dealer.
As they should be.
Make a motion to adopt.
Next, uh we have another one, disposal of some other uh some rifles. Rifle sales, two rifles that have trade in value of four hundred. Same thing with these that they.
These are being sold uh police department staff, the uh existing rifles.
Yep, and so the staff are buying the ones that we are old ones.
And they're buying for the what what you would have gotten on trade.
That they the the company, the company did not do a trade. So there these were. Market price they used to set for these.
I'm looking for approval for resolution two.
My second.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Joe. Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Okay.
Chad, those weapons, uh those five weapons, they would have been the ones you guys carried in your squad cars so that you've had them the entire time. Now they're obsolete. You guys are getting new ones. You're just buying your old.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was a different officer's firearm that you're purchasing at the auction.
Okay, and then we have the nuisance property update.
I handed out a two-page sheet. Least three property completed publication on January fifth. So now we got service made. Now we have the expert hearing date to get that get that done. I talked with RJ and he's moving forward with getting that done. Um the the Gleason property and the hate properties have already been just addressed. I have four thousand dollars for each of those properties held in my trust account as escrow that they'll get these completed by their September one deadline. If not, we'll take the money and go back after them again. The Kane Street property uh. One of the owners of that is the uh. LLC that probably bought it at tax sale. They didn't sign for their registered mails we have published. So RJ has got that going. It's already it's already begun, so that's moving forward. Uh the the two abatement cases, uh we've already got judgments. I need to talk to Tim about having city staff go on and. Clean up the properties and assess the properties for the cost. So now that is all the ones we have that are pending right now. So we've talked about taking these ones after the time. So if the city wants to. This is right now is all that we have on power. And I checked that against the chart that Tim gave you in your agenda too. So if you have any questions, that's where I where we're at.
I have one question. The cost of our city employees going to do that, that's a Saturday project?
It would probably be a Friday afternoon, Saturday from talking to Gleasoners.
Yeah, we'd be looking at on overtime or on straight pay for the employees to do that.
The Saturday would be overtime for sure.
Just out of curiosity with.
Oh, for cleaning up the.
Them having to go on and clean the properties.
Oh, that would be during normal work. Sorry, I missed it. That'd be during during normal.
I don't know what your guys' workload looks like. So this being added to the plate, I didn't know.
That's one of the things where I, my recommendation is we contract that out so we have a defined cost.
Right.
Without us having to go to the judge and say, well, this is their hourly rate, this is their benefits, and this is what we would have paid him and have him argue well, let's turn your number of work hours. You would have paid him anyway. So to me, that's where we just contracted. So we, it's a direct bill.
Right, we just want, but we want Tim, uh somebody out there to make sure they, the the big question is you want to make sure you don't take more than the order said we're able to do. You wanna, you don't want to start cleaning it up too much. We're only, we're only allowed to remove the nuisance. So we want somebody out there to make sure our contractor does all the stuff.
All right, next, uh I'm gonna talk some more, Ryan. Anything else to tell us?
Just a couple of quick updates. The utilities on East Bean are almost done. A few service drops from the upstream and we've. Should be ready to roll.
Uh the last council meeting in December, we had set up a public hearing to look at, also consider the Grand Avenue of those. Those plans are up to bid right now. There's a dozen contractors, actual contractors that have those plans that are looking at those.
A dozen?
Yep. And uh. Kind of good plan to open those on the eighteenth, and so you would have costs to consider if you want to look over either or both of those projects. So you have a, you'll have a holistic view of what those burdens are, make a decision on how you're going to pursue.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Okay, Tim.
Uh just again, a reminder, we'll meet next Monday at five o'clock. Uh we'll start going over our budget work sessions and. Stuff put together for you as far as handouts, if you have stuff to review. I've been out for the last two weeks with personal stuff, uh so I have not had a chance to do a bunch of information yet to get stuff prepared. Uh one thing I will say is is we did get our tax, our numbers back. Our valuations did grow eleven point six percent. With the different rollback and the reduction by the state code, uh we'll see growth of about eight point four percent, eight point two percent here.
Right in that range, yeah.
Yeah, so there is, that's positive news. Uh things we need to remember is the business property tax credit goes away. Uh they've increased the military tax exemption uh that what numbers I'm looking at right now doubled what we had previously for exemptions. Also, the homestead tax credit uh was not there previously, and that's almost the same or actually it's a little higher than what the military tax. Credit is. So those are things that you take away from uh total valuations that we've worked with. Fully anticipated, uh we're gonna have a lot of discussions in the opposite Monday nights. Uh right now, I talked with Connie, I think January twenty-ninth will be the night. We we do have a bigger presentation and that's a Zoom meeting. Uh so we can have Senator Dan Zomba and.
Senator Zomba has not returned any messages yet, but Craig, I heard from Mr. Johnson, Representative Johnson today, in fact, just before the meeting. He said he would be, he'd zoom in.
So that would zoom in at five o'clock. So uh we have a lot of work to do um and with a new timeframe for us to get stuff done, Aaron and I will be frazzled. Uh believe it or not, we do get along. At the end of the month, we may have a different opinion, but we do get along.
Uh Tim, the meeting on next Monday, you want to do that here?
Yes, five o'clock here at the council chambers, please.
Aaron. Nothing.
Actually talked to two people up on fairview and I, I know it's not my driving drive. They're actually excited about that street project. Jason going in. I mean, like they said, just to have people go off the other way once in a while when the fair is going on. Um and Baltimore. Really hoping it goes through. They were excited. Um no, that's all I got. And sorry for your loss.
Um yeah, just so you guys know, this is the opportunity to kind of bring up things. Yes, Joe.
So um we briefly discussed with some some of us here about the gov- uh garbage and clutter. Kind of pick up a type of idea, just looking through the current nuisance list that we had from Jim Hines. There's eight of the fifteen currently unresolved nuisances that could potentially benefit from something like that. Just kind of want to discuss it further down the road. And then uh as we go through budgeting, I'm hoping we can look into. Possibilities for incentives and different programs for small businesses in town to come here and then not only come here but expand. I mean, I know we have some now, but see if we got. More stuff to make us more appealing. And then uh briefly talked about the that Palm Station thing.
No, I'm gonna go back to something you said though, because anybody listening doesn't understand, I don't think, what you meant by your first one, because you said garbage. Okay, so can can I restate it?
Yep.
Wha- what we talked about was the possibility, what we would like to look at is the possibility of maybe having a day. Where people could put trash out and it would be picked up by.
The city.
Not necessarily by the city, but by some group so that they could get rid of larger things that the trash doesn't necessarily take. So it's it's the chance for them to clean out their basements and and that type of thing. Is that?
Correct.
I just felt like when you said it, it sounded more like doing something with the trash. Want people to think that's what.
Some stuff that we can't get rid of in our normal trash cans. Uh so like a spring cleaning type day or fall cleaning or something.
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but I just wanted to make sure people understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, no, I have one other thing to say. It's January. Be kind to your animals.
We've got J J Davis and uh Joe Shrek will be doing some public announcements here shortly. Um it would be nice when we have people speak if they would stand up, because a lot of times you watch video, you can't go back there and you can't see. If they come out or you can at least see them. I'll tell them to do that. I used to tell them that and then I got away. Yeah, yeah, I'll start saying it again.
I wonder if we should get a podium or something. Oh, and another question. Where is the low pressure problem at? Is it just over the east side?
It's on the fringe on the east side, because you go back uphill as you leave town. Manchester's in a bowl. So as you're heading north or east and northeast, as you go up those hills, the pressure is lower. We are meeting, we do meet the D N R requirements, uh but it it's less than what you would like to see. Um so basically, when we hit to that fringe where you have dead ends and your elevation's higher, uh that's where you see the pressure dropping a little bit. Uh when we say we have a low pressure and high pressure, we have two two pressure systems in the in the city, the high pressure side. Ryan, is it sixty-five PSI?
It's about seventy at the base of the tower. Sixty to sixty-five is a lot of it. Um even though as you get to the fringe. Um Spiegel Development where the hotel is, in Casey's, that's way on the edge. That's probably static forty. There's usage drops slower than that.
So where's it east?
East on Schulte, you send the Crohman's from probably thirty-five or thirty-five or so to forty.
The D N R requirement is is what, thirty-two, thirty?
I think twenty, but I mean, can't ever go below.
Can't go below twenty, minimum sex above thirty is minimal. So we're above the minimums, but we're.
But right there.
We're pretty much on the edge of the system and any future drought is beyond.
So my question is, should there have been some kind of alarm set? No, we're gonna have this development up here and it was going to be so slow that people are complaining about it?
Uh we we notified the property owner. We we had those conversations with the developers to what the expectations were. And so we've talked about service lines, water service lines, majority of them in town are three-quarter inch copper. But when you go to plastic, you can't use three-quarter inch plastic because that's equivalent to a half inch copper. So you have to upsize to a one inch to get to a three-quarter inch. It's. So material type is different and stuff like that. And so when they start looking at pricing to get uh to do construction. You can kind of look for corners you want to cut if you don't quite grasp it. So when we talked about the side, we said, well, you can't do two-story homes. Because the second story wouldn't have enough pressure. But like I said, we're at that fringe. We're we're there, we're fine, but it's not ideal.
Well, it's it's too bad it wasn't discussed more that people living around me complaining, because even this guy can't take a shower and flush the stool at the same time. Which is never a convenient way to.
I think the staff did talk to the developer.
Yeah, multiple conversations were had with the developer.
But nothing was done to solve a possible problem in the future.
Well, we we have looked at different ways to solve that. I, uh the first two options we discussed multiple times. It was option number C that was recently talked about doing a pressure booster. That's where, that that's a new twist that we had to consider before.
And the city has done steps to improve that with main moves. So it's it's one of those things that's an ongoing process that, you know, to fight it off one chunk. Gets quite extreme as far as budgeting costs. And there, there's that sort of programs, et cetera, but it's definitely an ongoing thing. Staff have been looking at it for, you know, quite a number of years. And it is anytime developers come in and see very open about what capacities are. What needs to be dealt with.
Okay, I'll start with that. Thank you. Yep, Brian. Okay. Um again, uh we want to extend our condolences to Tim and his family. Yeah, about his dad. Um it's lovely to get to finally meet him unfortunately the way we did, but um our subsidies to you guys. Also want to send our condolences to the city of Dyersville and the family of Mayor Jim Heavens. Uh he passed away in his funeral, I believe, was today. Um so I know he was a very progressive mayor and um gonna be missed by the community. And I also like to send out our condolences, prayers and support to our uh Iowa community of Perry, Iowa. And also um prayers to the victims of this unimaginable event. Brings my heart. I'd like to see us someday get back to where the only kind of. You know, drills you guys have to do is just fire drills and tornado drills like it was back in the day. So um our prayers and. And support to them. Um I don't have anything else. Be safe and pay attention to the weather forecast and updates and what they tell you to do. Um because it sounds like it's gonna get worse than what we thought. They upgraded it again this afternoon, so.
Parking will go into effect tonight, park even side of Parkin Street from ten P M to seven A M. We will put it into effect tomorrow night. Right now, we don't know if we'll do it on Wednesday or not, but we'll see how the weather plays out.
Awesome. So I need a motion to adjourn a second. And a second. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Yes. Oh, and also, we have some kids from uh East Buchanan. I'm so sorry. You have to stand up and say your name again for everybody. Hi Isabel and. And did you have any questions? Do you have to ask any questions? Do they make you ask a question?
Yeah, but I don't.
You got one of the longest meetings we've had in a while. So yeah, you should get extra credit. You should get extra credit. All right, safe travels, everybody.